Welcome back, everybody. I said that we would start with our 6.9 item, so let's go ahead and stick with that. Our 1:00 p.m. Consideration of Lake County Tourism Improvement District 2023 Annual Marketing Report. And with us, we have Brian Fisher. Would you like to take a seat in front? No, 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 like right here. I'm not kicking you out.
Easier for me to see.
Perfect. Then stand right there. I just wanted you to be comfortable.
That's where it's gonna be, Joanna? Like, yep. That'll be a lot easier. So, thank you, Brian Fisher, the Executive Director of Visit Lake County CA, the TID here. This, I think, is our fifth, maybe fourth, annual report. So, it's kinda, it's nice as we hit our stride. I was just mentioning to Supervisor Crandall that we've, you know, after a few years, you get, you know a little bit more what you're doing. And so, we look forward to just taking you through today, and I know you guys are pressed on time, so let's rock this. This is our agenda. Our board members, really only two changes on the board from the last time we met together was Jeff Pletcher at Robinson, and then we've got Jeff Warrenburg at Conacta Harbor. The rest of our board members have stayed the same. They stayed involved. We continue to have quarterly meetings, and, you know, it's a good, it's a good, solid board. I call on people all the time for stuff that I need. So, tourism and its economic impact. We all know that it's a major driver of an industry here in Lake County. This was our 2023 revenue, which was, we saw an 18% increase over 22 revenue at the TID. I think the most important part of this is to look, and you can see that both the county and then that, that contribution from TOT that you guys make is about 73% of Visit Lake County's budget. So, really important. And we have smaller partners, but we really, we can't say enough about how important the county is in this, this configuration here. Next is a slide from Visit Califor-- or, excuse me, this is our three-year comparison. So, now, again, we've got some data to look at, three years. We know where we're coming from, and you can see we had a bit of a dip in '22. We are, we, we do cash, our accounting is on a cash basis, and so, we realize revenue when we receive it, and we expense things when we have expenses, not versus an accrual basis. So, it can swing from year to year, which you could see can make it really difficult to sometimes budget. We don't know, because maybe a check comes in, in 2020. In this case, it didn't come in in 2023. So, and that would have been the third quarter of 2022. So, it gets confusing, but we're, we're kinda finding our stride there. So, we, this year, we're budgeted for 2024 at $516,000. So, we're growing it, and we're gonna continue to grow it. And then, Visit California, the most important thing here, you guys, there's a lot of data, but there's two things that I want to show you here, is that Lake County continues to be on a growth trajectory for tourism. It's a good growing industry for our county. It's one that we all need to get behind support, so we thank you for your support. The other thing that you can't really see over there is our share of regional spending. For the first time, I've been doing this, we beat Del Norte County. We came in fourth, or a third instead of fourth. So, we grabbed a percentage share. So, that's good. This is good. And, next slide, please. The economic impact. And we all know that it's not just about my stakeholders. It's about, really, the entire community. One, for every $1 somebody gets, that they spend in a stakeholder's establishment, they're gonna spend $3 somewhere else. Restaurants and food services is the top category, so all boats rise when tourism increases in Lake County. '23 marketing plan, this is how we really judge our success, and this is how we measure ourselves. Website traffic, social media growth and engagement, campaign impressions and performance, email database growth leads, marketing partnerships and our public relations. In the first one, we're gonna look at our website traffic. I can't give you a comparison from '22 to '23 because Google Analytics switched everything. They switched platforms from Google Analytics to GA4. So, everybody kinda lost their data, but suffice it to say, we have a lot of page views, we have had a lot of users, and a great deal of sessions. Most important is this quadrant over in the corner, the top referral sources, organic search. Hey, that means people are looking for us. That's a good thing. That's a really good thing to have at the top. We don't pay for that. Second is direct, another one we don't pay for. Granted, they might be looking for Lake County, Florida, Lake County, Illinois, who knows? But they're typing in direct, and they're coming to our, to us. Paid search is just that. It's, it's a pay-to-play. Organic search and then paid social, again, those are the top pillars, six pillars or five pillars that really kind of support our website. And then, next is our Book Direct widget, which is what we use a lot on, as a landing for everything. We really try to direct people right to a booking page, get them here. We saw over 56,000 searches on our Book Direct widget last year. That is up tremendously from the prior year, and people, you know, you can't say enough about how people are looking. Where do, where can I go say that? That's where they're sampling our inventory. It's a good thing, and we're gonna continue with our Book Direct widget. And we, we, it's, it's actually a lot of fun. There's a lot of cool data in there, but Book Direct has done great with its leads. Organic social media, thank you, Karen Pavoni. She does an amazing job with our social media, folks. 2.8% increase in Facebook followers in '23, and a 13% increase in our Instagram followers in '23. So, great stuff, a lot of out-of-county performance there. If you'll notice, a lot of it's video, too. That's, that's a big change. We're, we're doing a lot more video. We're doing a lot more stuff to engage people because really, short-form video is where social media is at right now. So, happy to see these kinda numbers. Monthly blog, that's okay. The monthly blog and our newsletter, that's a, it's really the foundation of kind of our stuff. We get to own all these people, which is great. In '23, we had 9,000 contacts. Our open rate was really super great, definitely above industry average, and our click-through rate was very good. We see that people who click through to our website from our newsletter spend a lot of time on the website. Best, best visitor to your website you can get is somebody who come from your newsletter. The other thing that we did is we really tried to dig into, what can we, what can we, what kind of promise can we make to somebody who's coming to Lake County? What can we tell them to do? What kind of itineraries can we give them? What kind of events can we put out there? And we see a lot more engagement with that, and so, we've worked really hard with the agency, and we're pleased at where we are. Paid search is just that. These numbers were all down across the year because we didn't have as much money last year to buy paid search. And so, it's just kind of a factor of how much money you've got, but almost a half a million impressions, 46,000 clicks to our website from our search, and then, our click-through rate is extremely good at 10, a little over 10%. Where they go, you can just, like, where are they going? What ad groups? You can see, it's all about the outdoors. It's California places to go, camp, camping in California. Those are those keywords that, once we find, once we lean into those, we continue to spend against those type of keywords. And then, we work in these ad groups, and again, it's outdoor entertainment, vineyards, hikings, casinos, spas, weddings, and events, and we find a lot of traffic coming from those top-performing ad groups. Facebook, paid social, Facebook and Instagram, we, again, we spend a lot against those. It is, you know, over 5.2 million impressions. We have, on the very far-left side, we do this really cool carousel that we change every quarter. We take eight different properties, and we feature eight different stakeholder properties. So, we engage people with, like, "Look at this cool place. Look at this." And, of course, we've been leaning really hard into Hotopia because they're new, they're cool, and it's something that we have exclusively. But we do, we do vacation rentals, we do Skylark Shores, we do Robinson Rancheria, we do, we do everybody. And then, we, we have some beautiful brand stuff, and then, yeah, we, we see a lot of engagement, and social media is very good for us, but we need, we need more assets, and we'll come to that later. Programmatic display banners. So, these are banners that play, how do you say it? It's like Ken Burns. We don't have video. So, we do things that are like, you know, we do pictures that move, and, and it's good, but it's kind of, kind of gotten a little tedious. So, we're working on that, too. But this is really the top of that funnel where you build that, that big impression. You, you, you reach people about, and they, you reach people, and they say, "I've really, I've never heard of Lake County, or what's Lake County all about?" And that's where you reach them, at the very top of the funnel. You create that interest. And next, we have our video performance. So, we run a connected TV, which is, you know, really kind of, you know, super affordable for people like us or a place like us. We do great impressions. Again, this is about top-of-the-funnel stuff, where you really just want people to have, like, a favorable idea about Lake County after they've seen your ad. And then, programmatic, nope, programmatic display, oop, nope. That's okay. Our partnerships, we have, we have some really strong partnerships. One of our biggest partnerships is with North of Ordinary, AKA, the North Coast, Del Norte, Humboldt, Mendocino, and Lake County. We all put in $11,000 each. Visit California matches us for another $44,000. So, that gives us $88,000 to go out and market. Basically, what we're trying to do is drive people to each one of our individual websites, and we really like to grab email addresses. So, we do a lot of stuff around email and gathering those email people because they're really valuable readers for all of us. We attended with them a big show, or this is our USA Today contest, so we can, again, leverage something that we wouldn't be able to do on our own. We're on USA Today, we're doing it again this year. It garters a ton of email leads for us, folks. We really build our database, and the emails are really good emails. We, people do not unsubscribe the minute they sign up for it. We start hitting them. So, we're really happy about that kind of giveaway. The Talman Hotel jumps in and gives two-night stay. Twin Pine Casino jumps in and gives a two-night stay. So, we've been able to, you know, engage people in different ways with this program. And then, partnerships. One of the most valuable partnerships in the state of California is with Visit California itself, largest destination marketing organization in the world. We had a destination mixer last December. You can see I brought in some rock stars from Lake County, Larry, Karen, Joy from Shannon Family, Melinda from Peace and Pliny, and the uber-rockstar of all, Angela De Palma Dow from our lake. And she brought this, I mean, she brought our lake to life. We brought Lake County to life for a really important audience. We had 110 people, and we could tell them everything about Lake County in about 15 minutes that we had, that we wanted, and it was great. And from that came a lot of great earned media. So, really important group. And then, we continue to partner and fund the CTA program, a great program that helps in-county people, you know, know how to do better interfacing with our visiting public and our visitors to the county, so we continue to fund that program. The trade shows, another great partnership we have with the Wine Grape Association. They took out a big booth at the San Diego Food and Wine Festival, and they gave us just a spot in the booth. All I had to do was fly there and stay there, and the Talman gave a two-night stay, so we were able to get a lot of new email leads and make a lot of amazing favorable impressions of people at this, at this food festival, Wine and Food Festival, which, I have to say, was probably the most beautiful thing I have ever been to. Wow, San Diego knows how to do it. Trade shows, we did attend the Visit California Forum, Outlook Forum, last year in Sacramento. It was a great forum. That's where all of us get together, lot of industry insight, a lot of sharing. They bring out some of the best professionals, they tell you all the latest trends, and, you know, those are the kinda things that we need to stay close to. We brought Trudy, who does some of our public relations, and we brought our account manager, who has been our account manager since, from the very beginning, at Medium Giant, Amber, who does a great job for us. So, trade shows, you guys remember this map, believe it or not. The map was in the middle of 2023, a fully-paid map. It's kind of like, just gave, band-aided us over till we got to where we wanted to be today. Lot of distribution outside of the county, again, all of, all the visitor centers and Sonoma Airport, and then, a lot of in-county, and best of all, fully ad-supported, folks. It, it didn't, it was paid for by advertising. And then, next, we did some, we did great with public relations in '23, some earned media. Earned media, stuff that you earn. You don't pay for it. And so, we got a lot of, lot of pickup. People are, you know, they're talking about us, they're hearing about us, they're seeing about us, everything from M Magazine to the SF Gate to Travel and Leisure. These are great places for us to start showing up because other people then see that, and then they start coming in. So, earned media was really important in 2023. And, as you know, we renewed the district in '23. You guys, we're here, we were in the chamber on February 7th. We have a brand-new district for 10 years, yes, so that's behind us. Can't, can't say enough about that. So, I want to do a little 2024 look ahead. Hey, I'm sure you guys have all seen our new magazine, Lake Life California, and 20,000 copies were just printed, 10,000 copies are out-of-county, they're at all the California visitor centers, so when somebody's in a California visitor center, right next to Napa and Sonoma, there's a beautiful magazine for Lake County. And we're also at the Charles Schultz Airport. So, if you're over, ever getting your baggage at the Charles Schultz Airport, make sure you take a picture of it and send it to me. It's right there, it's not hard to find, and again, it's next to all of our, all of our neighboring counties. So, it's important that we have that. Again, 100% fully ad-supported with some support, seed money from the county and both cities. We thank everybody for that because it got us all started, and we're excited about the magazine. We've got it out for a year. Community involvement, I helped with economic development in the Chamber of Commerce on the Lake County Leadership Forum. We pulled a really good group together, a good group of people together, and you'll see, we had Carolyn Batetta, CEO of Visit California, is our keynote speaker. Again, we need to raise our profile and stay in front of a very important audience at Visit California, and that was a great way to do it. New faces, Supervisor, Chair Sabatier. We've got some new faces of Lake County you're gonna start seeing this year. We just did our first shoot three weeks ago at all the wineries, and so, we've got a bunch of new folks. We're shooting in about three more weeks in August on the lake and in Clear Lake State Park. So, we're gonna have a bunch of new assets, and they're really high-resolution video assets. The, the partnership with the Lake County Wine Grape Commission is huge. They hired Brown Barn Films out of Sebastopol to come up and shoot this. They're gonna, we're gonna co-own the video, but really no conflict there. They've got their own audiences, and we've got ours. We're gonna take all that footage, and we're gonna put that all into our asset bank and start making all of those commercials that you saw that we were running on, on connected TV and in social, and we'll have a whole new audience now and a whole new group of people to use. So, we're really excited about that, and it was 100%, you know, it was, it was a great partnership. We, our out-of-pocket is, was nothing on the shoot, and so, super excited about that. Public, so far, you guys were doing really well with earned media in 2024, lots of, lots of pickup, lots of stuff going on. I mean, it's almost so much that, I'm not gonna say we can't keep up with it, but it's, it's a great, we're at a great place. People are writing about Lake County, and they're writing about, like, you know, food, where do you go to, you know, Foodie, A Foodie's Guide to Lake County. I mean, we're, we're, we're falling into these great spaces and these great little categories where people can, you know, think about coming up here, and what would they do here? We had our podcast, of course, I'm sure most of you heard the podcast on Visit California. That podcast gets distributed to, like, 30 million people. It's a huge way to, like, reach, you know, that's kinda reach we could never buy. So, excited about that in the public relations space. And, thank you. I'd love to take questions because I know that was a ton of data and a ton of stuff, but I figured.
I think you were pretty clear on the positives.
Yeah.
Your tone and your voice and your body language adds to the positiveness, so I appreciate your presentation today and the work that's been happening at the TID and all around. Let's see if we have any comments or questions. Supervisor Green?
Just very briefly. It will be constructive criticism, but it will be criticism. I did appreciate looking at Visit California, the state website, in particular, its privacy policy. When you are doing tourism, you are marketing both local people and potentially international visitors, and there are some things in there that I think the privacy policy on your website could benefit from, including some attention to GDPR appliance, compliance for European site visitors.
Got you.
I have shared some information internally because I think that's a concern I share with our website as well. So, I just wanted to point that out. It is what it is, at least one is there, but it very much looks like a generic one-off, and I do think more attention is needed, and I think Visit California would be a good resource for you.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? I appreciate you, obviously, hearing some of the constructive criticism of the past, hence, you yelling my name today. Love to see the evolution.
Yeah.
The TID has had a slow start. Now, you have your 10 years, you have your legs beneath you. I can only imagine what's gonna happen over the next few years, and I appreciate these annual reports. Appreciate seeing the increases, especially the TOT increases that we're seeing.
Yep.
That, those are all good signs. There is one thing that I, it's not a concern, but there's just, it doesn't match, like, mathematically, and I know that we've done a decent job. I don't know that we could ever be perfect at changing how we attack our TOT in the sense of Airbnbs, because they're kinda difficult to find and continuously capture the TOT tax that should be paid to the jurisdiction. I know the city of Clear Lake just jumped ship from HDL, and I think they're doing their own thing, and they actually saw a pretty decent increase in the number of Airbnbs. But knowing the amount of fish tournaments that occur within the city of Lakeport, that number from the beginning seems somewhat low, especially when I'm comparing it to, and great job at Middletown Rancheria, but when I'm comparing it to them, I'm like, how is it possible with all the fishing tournaments that occur? So, I'm not sure if there's a push that the TID can do to get all of us at the same level for our TOT and getting access to our Airbnbs and whatnot, because all of that counts for you.
Yeah.
And so, just, just a thought, when I see the numbers that I feel like it could be more, granted, I'm glad we are where we are, but I think there, there's potentially some missed opportunities.
Yeah, I would completely agree. We just, I mean, just this week, we found two in Clear Lake that we shared with Alan that are definitely not registered. It is, yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, our, our two cities aren't very big contributors to the bottom line. We see that, but, yeah, I can't, I can't build hotels. There are, there are a lot of Airbnbs in, in, that are, that are non-compliant, and there are ways to approach that, but it gets pretty legal pretty quick. It's really, and I don't think it's complicated because we're not the only one that face it. A lot of other places, cities, counties face the same thing, and they require registration, and we could do that with Airbnb. We were, we could require that in order for Airbnb to place a listing on its site for the county of Lake, that they need to have a registration number, or the listing won't go live. But, I mean, you're talking legal time now. You're talking.
And, and I know I just came back from a conference, and I forget if it was VRBO or Airbnb, but they were at the conference, and they, they talked about how they're working hand-in-hand now with individual counties, working on ordinances. So, I, I have information to pass on to our property tax collector, just to see, and I know that Supervisor Paeska wants to comment on my statement.
Well, I just, initially, I, I know that our tax collector has brought this up to us recently, and it seems like things are constantly inflexed there, and so, there's always opportunities to have those conversations with him.
Yep.
But, what I really wanted to talk about or ask you, because we do have new projects, and this was something that we talked about at the TID often, and I, I just haven't been able to make all of the meetings like I used to, so apologize for that. But that was a conversation before, is how do we grow revenue when we're not seeing new projects? And now that we have new projects, do you have projections of what this next year might look like with Hotopia being online and also Conacta Harbor? And are there any other projects coming that maybe the full board's not aware of?
Well, you, you would have known Get Away Home, that is scheduled to open 59 units down off of Morgan Valley Road in Lower Lake. We're only very, the first time because of the, you know, we, we haven't seen really any of the revenue from those new projects yet because it just doesn't come in that quickly. So, and I've, I've asked Patrick, and, you know, we, he also can't break it.
He's behind you.
He can't break it out. He can't break it out, like, okay, here's how much they paid. So, I think we're gonna get a better indication, but it's just gonna take some time. But new product is without a doubt where we're gonna, you know, we're gonna do better. We, we have to have new places and new product for people to come and stay in Lake County. And, and, you know, three is, three is good. I did hear, though, that it sounds like Conacta Harbor is going to close November through, I think, April.
So, they're gonna continue to be?
Yeah, so, that's, that's, you know.
That's hard for fishing.
Yeah. It's not really good for, for, you know, trying to predict what revenue is gonna happen there. But they're filling the place up. When they've had these shows, they're, they're doing their stuff, so, you know, you just have to take it as, I know both, both cities are talking to prospective hotels, and, you know, there's the project, there's the property out here and on the lake, but we don't have a lot of new stuff.
The fainting couch.
I've been to the fainting couch.
We've had that new property in Cobb's.
I did, and that is nice. It is off the charts.
Yep.
Yeah, I got the whole tour.
All right. Well, maybe next year, we'll be able to talk about some benchmarks after this summer's data is fully.
We'll have it.
Yeah, great.
Any further comments or questions? Supervisor Simon?
Last comment, yeah. Appreciate the energy you bring on the reports, but we've come a long ways, and like I said, we're just up for another decade, so continue telling our story. You know, sometimes you'll get a negative article that goes out about the lake or something. I think you look at it from the standpoint, any publicity is good publicity. It's how do you spend that? How do you educate people? So, telling our story. You know, when I, when we first talked about creating this TID and getting into this, you know, that's what it is. So, I appreciate the work that's being done, the communication, the meetings, and we'll just keep growing it. So, from a tribal standpoint, we completely support it, and make sure our dollars are spent, you know, in the right spot, and you guys are doing a great job of that. So, greatly appreciate everything, and every customer that comes through would just continue to tell Lake County's story, because there's great eateries around the lake, opportunities, and we all know economic development and hotel development is something we just need to continue to push. Cities are looking at projects, tribes are looking at projects, the whole community. We got plenty of places to go, we just need to continue that. And I like to see the graphics of looking for the camping, the cabins, those types of things, because we're developing those, and yeah, Hotopia is a very unique place. The day that project was presented in my district, I thought, what a great idea. So, perfect thing. I appreciate the Six Sigma family bringing that to Lake County. Thank you.
Vice Chair Crandall?
Oh, I was just gonna highlight that a lot of the improvements that you've put out there, I've seen it grow exponentially, very good work, and I know that with Airbnbs and whatnot, I, I thought I was doing something great, meeting with a couple of folks a couple of months back, but staff's already been on it, and different departments already looking at what to do with that from here forward. So, yeah, I know that that should be something coming eventually here, this year or so, or maybe, yeah.
Okay. Did I cut you off from saying something?
No.
A quick question. I see you're on the Gram and Facebook. Are you doing any other new social media? I know Discord is huge. I know that, and it's not necessarily social media, but it's where people are. And also, TikTok, are you looking at any of those things?
We have TikTok as a channel. We just really don't have the assets for it.
Right.
You have to post on TikTok, like, five times a day almost to even find yourself anywhere. So, we, we tried, and I think a lot of destinations, I know a lot of destinations, it comes up at every one of the conferences we go to, DMOs are struggling with TikTok just because of the sheer volume of it. So, and there's no paid option, like, you can't really advertise on TikTok. So, it really has to be organic, and you almost need like a, you need like a celebrity, somebody that, you know, can take it and be your personality.
And you need influencers.
Yeah. And influencers, we, we've done a lot with influencers. We're looking at a really cool influencer for this year that we're gonna share with our North of Ordinary crew. That board meeting's next Friday, so we'll hope to hash something out there. But, yeah, influence, Visit California sent some influencers through, and that wasn't on our ticket at all, and we did, we got a lot of, lot of good earned media from those folks.
And I'd love to talk to you to see what kind of relationship maybe we can build between Peg TV and the TID to see how we can help one another, if that's a possibility.
Sure.
And also, I know when I go to outside hotels, there's kind of like a little preview of what's in the surrounding area that's already kind of on a loop in, on the TV. Is that something that you're looking into to help with the CTA by, by kinda creating[1693.88] Is that something that you're looking into to help with the CTA by kind of creating the, here's what you can do since you're already here?
Right. I mean, that's kind of what we're really relying on this in the rooms for, to be honest with you. I don't know what people's video capabilities would be at most of our stakeholders. I wouldn't think it'd be probably, it'd be, that would, they'd have to make an investment before we ever made the investment, would be my guess.
Okay. Just thinking out loud.
I like it, yeah.
But thank you for the work that you're doing. Obviously, it's not just generating funds for you, it's generating funds for us. So I think this is a win-win situation to continue the relationship.
Thanks, everybody.
Oh, wait, Supervisor Green?
Just one last minute, constructive criticism. Again, loved the presentation, wasn't posted with the agenda. Those tuning in online may not have been able to see it particularly well. Don't see an about us page on your website. So I know you're definitely tourist focused and a TID is not the first thing they're looking for. But whether it's our website or yours, having some ability to post these reports would not just improve transparency while we're talking about it, but also give you some evergreen content that people can refer back to. So I'd be, I'd love to send people to the website now and say, just look at the PowerPoint, there's no place to send them, so.
Yeah, we do actually have, we have, we have our own website, which is discoveryourlake.com, which is our trade site. And it's not posted there yet because I didn't, I hadn't given it, but it'll be posted there. Last year's is on there, it's discover your lake. So we have to have an industry trades, we have to have a trade site.
For the TID?
Pardon?
For the TID.
Correct.
Okay. But you don't link out from this website at all?
You know, we really, you really don't want your consumers on your trade site. I mean, they can find it, it's not hard.
Well, maybe you don't, but maybe I do.
Oh, you could, yeah. But you don't, because there's a lot of, I mean, nobody does that in the industry is what I can say. I mean, like you can go to Mendo, you can go to SF Travel, they all have trade sites where that's where they do their business, where we put our minutes, we put our, all of that stuff because we're required to. And we do do that, but we're not required to put it on our website or link there. And nobody has, and I think it's just, I don't know that you really want to put your financials on your industries. I mean, you know how many phone calls I get?
You're going after the consumer.
How many phone calls I get already from people trying to sell me something?
Simple footer link.
Here's what our budget is.
A simple footer link or a sidebar link.
Yeah, no, and I agree with you, there'd probably be no traffic to it, but it's just, it hasn't been an industry norm. Nobody's.
I mean, that, that would need board direction.
That, that sounds like that would be TID board direction.
Yeah.
Brian, Mr. Fisher, thank you very much for your report. Fantastic job, keep up the good work.
Have a good one. Appreciate your support.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to our 1:30 PM, 6:10 hearing, consideration of, oh. I'd love to open public comment for anybody who may have just recently left the chamber. I see no one in the chamber and we have Donna McWitt. Oh, sorry.
Was that for the last item?
Yes. You want to comment? Since I called on Donna, let's go ahead and start with Donna, but yes.
Thank you Supervisor Spatier. Donna McWitt, Red Bud Audubon. A year available natural resource that needs highlighting is bird watching. Bird watching is a multi-billion with the B industry and one of the fastest growing nature-based tourism sectors in the world. The spending contributes to local communities, adds to benefit biodiversity conservation, and each year over 45 million Americans take part in bird watching. Each year, those millions of bird watchers spend about $41 billion. We have over 350 species of birds. We're on this Pacific Flyway and we're recognized as an international important bird area. Besides that, and this will be a plug for an oak protection ordinance, our forests are amazing and they need highlighting. We have 2,300 species that are associated with oaks and that doesn't include all the fungi or bacteria or microorganisms. And just in oaks alone, there's 38 bird species and bryophytes and fungi and invertebrates and lichens and mammals that are dependent on our oaks. And our Lake County Land Trust properties are so amazing. Some people don't even know or haven't even been out to the Rodman Preserve. So Lake County is a beautiful place and I just wanted to share what I thought. Oh, and in the Clear Lake Oak Keys, we have over 100 short-term rentals like BnBs and I don't know how you monitor that. Thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Sullivan.
While he's walking up, Donna actually was instrumental in arranging a BBC documentary to, about the Grebes, but the weather steered them somewhere else, but it was almost happening this February, yeah.
So good afternoon, Patrick Sullivan, Treasure Tax Collector. Just going to add a little bit to the discussion about driving more revenue to TOT and the TID. In fall, it is our intention to go forward with an RFP for new software that can help identify short-term rentals. It's similar to what we had before, except there's a lot more options out there. So there are certainly unregistered listings again out there that are not reporting and not paying taxes. We did attempt to work with Verbo and Airbnb, try to see if we work on arrangement, but we really did not get any sort of engagement. The other issue that has come up with working with them is that many counties have not found Airbnb or other comparable companies to be the partner that was promised. They've begun not enforcing a lot of the agreements against property owners in the area. So people have been able to opt out of paying the required taxes to Airbnb, which since Airbnb as part of the agreement requires us to give up a large number of our rights, it's effectively made it, I would argue, impossible to proceed with them. So I think at this point, we're going to look at software and kind of go back down that path. My hope is that that software will also be made available to other departments, including code enforcement or others that could benefit from it. So it could help be part of a broader solution. So thank you all.
And just as a quick suggestion, if it's possible to partner with both jurisdictions as well to capture as much of it as possible rather than just one, that would be great for that software.
Yeah, I think if City of Lakeport or City of Clear Lake wanted to, it'd probably be possible to join in. Usually paid by the listing, so theirs would be a very minimal cost, but I'm happy to run that by them when we get there. All right, thank you.
Thank you. And we do have, please come on up before I move on to Zoom.
Michael Wagner. I just wanted to chime in on something that had been said earlier about ecotourism, I think is what the term would be. And I didn't really see that buzz term in the presentation. It would seem like it might be something that'd be helpful and useful, especially just given the day and age that we live in, the idea of ecotourism and the Lake County Land Trust, it's like right here at our fingertips, organizing some tours or something along those lines would seem like income generators and really focusing on the environment. Thank you.
Thank you very much.